So. Eighteen thirty, we call the meeting to order. Okay, uh, actually.
Yep.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States. For which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, and liberate and just for all.
Hey. Right. Roll call. Neil?
Present.
Suzie?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Myself, present, and Michael?
Is excused.
Is excused, okay. Roll call is complete. Um. We do not have any additions additions or deletions. Number three, public comment. Nobody's. No? Okay, um, number four, consent agenda. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second? Second, any discussions? No discussions, okay, all those in favor? All right, any opposed? No opposed, motion not passed. So. Yes, sir, come on up, you're in the hot seat.
Hot seat, right. Well, thank you very much for having us here, it's always a pleasure to come and and tell you guys about what we've done, what we've experienced. Uh, we have our, two of our current uh, team members here for robotics, Mason Young's here, uh, Danny DeGoss, he graduated, it was his senior year last year, uh, Kaden also graduated, but that's here for.
That's a good one.
Good ones, at least they don't have the one with me. Yeah, thank you. So.
Well, just say, well, they're getting their picture taken there, that we invited them in tonight because they placed second in the nation, both our drones team and then our robotics team, so congratulations, yes, let's give my hand.
I hope it's more painful to say, but it was, it was so, so close, I mean, the difference for our robotics team, because it's a total score of a thousand points, and the difference in person second was six points.
Wow.
Yeah, so it was, it was that close, and I know the, we don't know exactly what it was for the drones, because we don't know what first place got, but we know it was also very, very close, still. But we know the things that we can do to, to change it and uh, improve that much more and do that much better next year, and that, we're gonna, we're gonna do it, and we're gonna go after it again, for sure.
Well, we're glad you're here tonight, we're certainly proud of you, and proud of uh, what the team is doing, not just, I mean, you guys, gosh, going to Nationals now, second year in a row, um, definitely making us proud, but seeing that you now have other people to choose from to be your partners as you move forward, don't you? Because there's, you have some depth to your teams, which is very cool, not so much in the drones, right?
No, I do have a depth, gotta find someone else.
Yeah, yeah, so. You could ask some questions, or yeah?
I'd like to see you guys, just take a minute, uh, make your robotics and your uh, your drone, and uh, Mr. Cus, do you have videos of the actual?
The actual competition?
Yes, I do.
Or at least a part of it, um, is that, has that been published at all, or shown, or?
No.
Is you, what I'm, what I'm getting is, is, can we share that? Or part of it, or something, either uh, on the web, uh, on our local website, or here?
Yeah.
Whichever is easier.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be great, I will, I will forward it on and then give it to you, for sure, yeah.
I saw the initial, um, when, when it was posted, you know, you guys had took, taken second place, so it's, I didn't think about video, I was like, oh.
Hey, so would you explain a little bit what you have to do in this competition?
So, basically what I'm doing right now, uh, we have to pick up something, but I've done the competition, it's on a coffee cup, it's a, it's a little ordinance, it's a cube, and for state, it's much more simple, not as complex, it's uh, you have to do it in a little course, there are smellboxes and a little house, and you have to open, that's why we have the hook, and we use FPD goggles now, we used to use a monitor, but now we have like a, you got a kind of VR headset kind of thing, this is a lot more clear, and we have to go in, and we have to find and dispose of two ordinances within a four-minute time, six minutes?
Uh, six minutes at Nationals.
Six minutes at Nationals, yeah, Nationals is a lot bigger, it's a lot bigger course, there's like, there's a ramp, there's a bridge, there's a tunnel, there's a lot of different individual challenges, one is a blind drive, well, that's what I call it, it's where Daniel was the driver, but he couldn't see the robot, he couldn't see the course, I have to give him verbal instruction, um, there's an arm mechanism challenge where we have to dispose of three ordinances and three different mailboxes, one's, it's connected to the door, one's normal, one's with a string you have to pull out, have a big course, uh, it's just an obstacle course, and I'm forgetting, uh, the vent one, to go in an event, you have to use your camera to see a little message, and then show that to the judge, and is that it? No, chassis challenge, this is a debris field, that's the one that is the most anxiety-inducing for me, because if your robot falls off that thing, it's gonna die, like, it's gonna break.
Falls off that thing, what is, what is it on?
It's, they have a debris ramp, so there's pipe, there's PVC pipe under a carpet, on a ramp going upward, so if your robot bounces off, that's, it, I've seen robots break from that.
Falls off.
Yeah. But no, that's just my little robot.
And you've built this robot, right? And you can continue to use this robot even after the competitions, right?
Correct.
We're gonna make some, we have some ideas for some modifications that we're gonna make to it, though, I like the debris field that we talked about, and we'll make it, should be, make it smoother, for that. And one added thing, and I, I wanna, I wanna share this, I, I hope I got Mesa's permission to do so, but one of the reasons that we went to this uh, type of method for doing it, it's with Mason, it's uh, this is an issue, and with the uh, we buy goggles, because now that's all he sees when he looks through, we can focus in on his contest.
Oh, yeah.
So you would wear that, as you were telling um, Daniel, where do, you'd wear those?
No, uh, the only one, the only two, two that I wear that is the main chat, the main challenge course, uh, which is the upgraded from state, find the two ordinances, and so forth, we get really lucky with our ordinance placement, though.
Yeah, you did the, this is the last year, well, the first year you really did, that was really.
Yeah, it gave you a little heart attack.
It was a little.
And then, he's, the camera POV challenge, obviously, that's the one with the vent, because you, you aren't supposed to be able to see, it, it just tests how good your camera signal is. Yeah, it's a lot of fun, I'm glad Rochester has robotics, we couldn't do it without Mr. Cus, of course.
Alright, um, this thing is a little sketchy flying, but I won't fly it too much.
Let's take the things in the cage.
You can see up there.
Uh, but it's pretty much our first challenge that we set up, in, um, our first challenge for Nationals, we have, um, in a giant enormous arena, I think it's at least twenty feet by twenty feet, yeah, it's huge, um, and they have multiple challenges inside of it, this year was a little bit different than last year, um, uh, this year, there was a, a ton of buckets around the arena, and we had to take pictures of each one of them, and then there was, the second part was, um, they're both fifteen minutes, and we both barely made that time limit, um, but the second part, there is a ton of landing pads, there was twenty-two of them, that we had to land on all of them, and then there was also little Lego figures hidden around the arena, that we didn't, and they didn't tell us anything about the actual competition until we actually started it, so, everything was planned right then and there, and it was a little chaotic, but we actually did it pretty well, Kaden wasn't running, but it was a lot of fun, um, and then we have three other tasks, we have a um, test, FAA test, part of um, flying drones, you have to have your commercial license in order to do any commercial uh, usage, part of that is um, your autonomous flight license, or your Part 107, and the huge deal about it is, if you don't have it, you can basically get a huge fine, so luckily that we aren't flying outside for any commercial things, so we don't have to worry about it, um, but that's one of the biggest parts, and then we have, um, oh, the maintenance, so we have the maintenance task where we aren't repairing these drones, but there's another drone that is, it's a company that sponsors it, and it's a drone that we've built, and we've actually got to see how it works, and in-depth in that competition, we got almost exactly a hundred percent for that part, we spent almost months on actually building that robot, and the company isn't the best of all, but we got it working, um, and we spent almost forever figuring out how to do that part of the competition, and we are very happy we placed well, because that's the part we kind of struggled with, and then our fourth task, it's changed from Nationals from last year to this year, originally, it was planning a autonomous flight, it was a completely, you would have to figure out what you're supposed to do, all of the commercial things, there was how high you can fly it, uh, what restrictions are happening, and um, what, like, what height in order to get the perfect resolution, there was a ton of aspects, but this year, they changed it more of a multiple choice test, it was a little bit different, and we didn't expect it, but we were able to do actually still pretty well on it, and it was actually awesome this year.
We had the freedom.
You did, I have one story I'd like to definitely share, too, is that, from the years that we've gone, especially since we've gone to Nationals, I remember like, especially the first year that we ever went, way back, uh, you know, before COVID, we went and uh, the, the other advisors and people, you know, they, when you're talking with the others, that they're working with their other teams, they say, oh, where are you guys from, we say, oh, you know, we're, we're the, from Washington, oh, we're out in Washington, you say Rochester, Washington, and they'd be like, oof, there's, there's a Rochester in Washington, where, where's Rochester at? And I would, and I'd tell them, well, you know, it's uh, south of Olympia, and they'd go, I'm not really sure where Olympia is. Say, well, how about south of Seattle, okay, okay, yeah, we know where you're at, but now, this last year, when we went, I had several advisors come up to us, and they were asking us questions about our programs, I'd say, hey, you guys are the ones from Rochester, Washington now, so, yeah.
You're getting us on the path.
They're starting to move, they know where Rochester, Washington is.
Thank you, Mr. Cus. I have a question, so, did you build that by yourself, or was that a class effort? Does that work?
Let's me and my partner.
So you just have two people, does everybody in the, how many people?
Yeah, everybody who does it, yeah, we have enough kits that, and spare parts and stuff, and they kind of come up with their own, they know what the, what they've got to accomplish and what they got to do, and then they modify it, change it, we have 3D printers, we make parts for it.
I see.
Do all kinds of things, and, you know, that's when we find out, we go to a competition, we find out, well, they changed this one, now we gotta go over this debris field that has no guard railing, and we gotta be able to go adopt, so what can we do now differently? Because we had trouble getting up it, with and still having the control we want, what can you do, we already got some ideas of how we're gonna do that, how we're gonna change that.
And this, this is a class?
Well, I have a robotics class as well, too, uh, so some of my kids are in there, but a lot of the kids, this is um, after-school activity, and after-school.
Like a sport, then?
Yeah, it's like a sport, yeah.
Okay.
Neil, you got any questions?
Nope, I'm just impressed, and you guys continue to demonstrate the best, the best Rochester has to offer, several years now.
Yeah.
And uh, and the state, and you're representing our area well, and thank you guys.
Yeah, the, the support for us has just been amazing, they mean, after we had our little incident where we lost all of our equipment, that we, the community came back and supported us, was just amazing, it would never, would never have happened if it hadn't been for the support that we got from the community, and the continued support, because, you know, doing these competitions and doing things is not free, we do a ton of fundraising, and the more support we can get from the community, the more that our businesses can support us, the less fundraising we have to do, and the more we can focus on doing.
Yeah, my neighbors are getting quite annoyed. Uh, every year, I go out, like, hey, you wanna help me with robotics fundraising? They've been very supportive.
Happy you received.
Luckily, and now, now I work at the place, the fundraiser I had.
Are the drones that do, the other, other schools that compete with the same drone, or is there a standard?
Um, there is, only standard they have is motor size, but it could be anything you want, um, last year, we saw basically all DJI drones, those are almost widely-used brand, they're really good, I have a DJI drone, and I love it, um, yeah, that's DJI, um, and then this year, we saw someone using the sponsored company's drone, and they put a ton of modifications on it to make it actually work, and it was actually very impressive what they did, they basically completely remade the whole drone out of 3D printing, and they put a lot of money into it, but it was really cool to see it.
It does have to have a 360 guard, this one doesn't currently have it, but it's a guard that goes around, that's the main requirement for safety that they have during competitions, other than that, it's, it's pretty open, but of course, the smaller your drone is, harder it is to accomplish some tasks, if it's too big, then it's hard to perform the landing tasks that they have to do, so there's things you gotta take into account, figure out what's the best. I am, I am currently acting as the robotics coordinator for the state of Washington, so I field questions from all the advisors all over Washington for both of these contests, as well as I'm getting some comments from other states now, too.
You're famous.
Although.
How many schools in the state of Washington participate in this drone program?
It's varied over the years since I've uh, started with, I know with the first year we, we started, uh, we had, within Washington, we had, there was about ten schools that were involved, and then kind of COVID came in, and that killed a lot of programs, well, a lot of people, they cut back and they lost it, and it kind of dropped down at that point, but now it's making a steep climb back again, because I, I know just last year, I helped uh, four other schools start their programs, and we had three of them came to our regional competition, and then I suspect that that'll probably be doubled this next year, so.
How many competed at State this last year, new teams?
Twenty-four robotics, it was like seven drones, at least.
Seven?
It was seven, Sheldon, and three from Eastern, I have no idea.
We go seven.
Yeah, regionals, we actually had other schools, surprising.
At the national level, we have fifty teams, one from each state, so. Get up to fifty teams.
The drone competition, that hasn't been in existence as long as robotics.
No, only it's, it's for Washington, it's only been for two years, at the national level, they've done it for three years, so it's an, it's an up-and-coming program, and it's gradually starting to build and build, they're still changing the contests as well, so we have to keep up on that, one's the one that's the impious one, because we don't know what's gonna happen next year, because they're always changing the, the parts to it.
I think that, that career is still.
Oh, yes, it's a blooming area.
It is a blooming area, it's still developing as a career, so, yeah.
And when you're at the um, competition in Georgia, it's not just high school students, right?
No.
There's college students.
College and middle.
And middle school, right?
Fun fact.
Uh-oh.
The college students are not good. They fall apart like Lego.
I mean, they did the same thing for us.
No, middle schoolers are actually pretty impressive, high schoolers where it's the most impressive, and then college.
So, do you plan on going into some kind of robotics stuff?
Yeah, um, I plan on becoming an aerospace engineer, uh, and hopefully going on the International Space Station personally, but, yeah, I'm hoping to go into somewhere in engineering.
And so I'm assuming that you take his advanced calculus, or?
Oh, yeah, AP physics, too.
Yes.
Yes, he did, they, they were all in my AP system, so.
Okay, good.
I, I bombed that test, that was not, that was, I think.
Go on the biology one. So, do they divide you guys up into uh, school sizes?
No, no.
It's just anybody in this.
Yeah, there is no division for your school size, there's no Class A, Class B.
Okay.
Everybody, you qualify for your state, you get first to your state, you're representing your state.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, how much of this program is funded through the school, school pays for any of this thing, I know you said, donations for stuff going to Nationals.
Yeah, mo- most of my salary, because I'm under the CTE umbrella, so most of my, my salary comes from that, um, the, certainly for our, our trip, there's some funding, I would say probably, maybe about twenty-five percent of it says, is CTE funded for the trips and stuff that we go on for the competition, but the rest of it, we do through fundraising. So, and then, and if you go to, basically to do a competition for a state competition, runs about, about two thousand dollars is what it is, so you figure, you know, the CTE program is usually paying for the hotel stay or travel, and then the rest of it, we're, we're paying, the trip when we went to Atlanta, a bit, there's big difference with state, we take a minimum of like sixteen to state, for Nationals, we took two teams to Nationals, but Nationals costs, because that's for a week, traveling all the way to Georgia, that's about, about twelve, about twelve thousand dollars in total, and again, CTE will cover the hotel and the travel for that, but the rest of it's super crazy.
So what's it take for the national competition to come to Washington?
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, God, you need to be, keep going down to the South, I'm like, what?
I know, and it, and it certainly gives, there certainly is an advantage to them, because they have far less travel than they have to do, you know, so the East Coast is all of our teams, that our most competitive teams are on the East Coast.
Oh, well, you're right.
Yeah.
It is Skills USA National Convention, not just drones and robotics, so there is over a hundred different competitions that occur at this convention with, but three or four thousand students at this, so.
I think even more than that.
The, the, the ability to pull off a national convention like that with all of the specialized, because they do auto body, they do uh, welding down there, they, I mean, to have the species to do that, it's probably not moving out of Atlanta, Georgia anytime soon.
No, in fact, in fact, they just signed.
They signed a contract, and it's off Big Hill 2030, so.
Have to go to Kentucky.
It used to alternate every five years between Atlanta and Kentucky, but, uh, they just, I think Atlanta gave them a better deal.
And it's difficult to find the places to run those competitions, it's very difficult.
We got the Tacoma go. Just switch the arena, no, I know, I'm joking.
Another idea for doing funding, maybe some sort of buttons that you guys could put out there, and put in different stores, and different places around town, where you can sell this particular year, and then each year be a collector's item, so people will continue to want to get those.
You do that, um, well, not us, but it's a big, pinch trading is a very big thing, it's no secret.
Oh, yeah, I can see that. Idea for getting that local funding.
Thank you, we do have a big, our biggest fundraiser is gonna be the one in February, we have Applebee's breakfast that will sell tickets for, so, definitely keep your ears out on that one.
You'll get some money from me if you do some Krispy Kreme doughnuts.
We might even deliver them.
Anything else?
Nope, nope, it's all from me, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys.
Thank you very much.
Very impressive, thanks for coming in.
Hey. Reports. College and the high school dual credit.
Austin's gonna give you some, provide an update on all the college and the high school credit courses that we offer.
All right, so Jennifer said what's on that slide, so, we'll move on to the next slide, um, so, there, there's a, there's a couple of different ways that uh, college credit is offered at Rochester High School, uh, one is, one way is through what's called college and the high school, uh, the other is through what is called articulation agreements, um, college and the high school courses are courses that um, the teacher in our high school has been approved to teach a class to get college credit, whereas a CTE articulation is where the college agrees that the framework that we use to teach a particular CTE course, say for instance, sports medicine, the components within there, they, uh, if a kiddo passes that, passes that course, then we have an automatic articulation, articulations are not based on the teacher, articulations are based on the course materials, whereas college in the classroom is based on who is teaching it and their qualifications, okay, uh, to do that, so, um, I broke these up into, into content areas, as, as you can see, uh, our Eastern Washington University, uh, we offer a couple of courses in English, uh, namely that, the English 101 is probably the most, the most prized, as that is, uh, everybody's gonna take uh, English 101, no matter what they, no matter what they do, typically that English 170 ends up being a transfer credit that most other uh, schools, but, but it will, it will suffice for elective credits towards undergrad, uh, if you start looking at the math courses, we do offer uh, four math courses, all those math courses would be taken by eleventh or twelfth graders, um, that math reasoning, which is Math Form of Seven, is actually considered math for non-math majors, uh, so if you are getting a philosophy degree or an English degree, uh, you get to take that, if you're getting a science, uh, more of a Bachelor of Science degree, then that math class does count, uh, toward your degree area, but that's okay, because if you were, you, of the four classes offered there, um, if you were uh, gonna go into the sciences, you're gonna take those three bottom ones anyway, um, and you would have to take them at the university level as, as it is, so, um, so you can see, we offer twenty math credits, um, currently, we are offering uh, pre-cout A and B and problem stats, um, this year, um, and uh, hopefully we'll be offering the mathematical reasoning next year, as, as we did, yeah, I think we only have three or four kids sign up for that, and so as, at the, at the high school level, they sign up for classes, we offer them, we don't get enough kiddos sign up for them, then it, it wouldn't be offered, type of thing, so, yeah.
What's the asterix?
The asterix are the ones we're teaching this year, so, and AP, um, English 170, 101, it's, it's on alternating years, so one year we'll teach a, a one or two sections of the 170, the next year we teach one or two sections of the 101.
Day engineer, junior.
Yep, yep, it just falls back and forth, uh, and, and we're super excited about the math, because we finally get, it's been three or four years since we've been able to offer math, uh, college and high school, so that's, that's super exciting, um, I have someone in my house taking advantage of at least fifteen of those credits this year, um, on the social studies side, uh, last year, we started offering uh, the world history at tenth grade, so our sophomores actually get to pick up five uh, EWU credits in world history, they take the full year, um, and then US history, they get five credits each semester, and then in place of the old uh, current old issue, CWI, students can take AP comparative politics instead, um, and which will satisfy the uh, PoliSci 203, um, so all of those courses there are actually GURs or GER, GREs, um, towards, you know, fulfilling those undergrad requirements that are needed, so it, when you look at Eastern, a kiddo can really leave our school, and let's say they did the pre-cout, problem stats, all the social studies, the Englishes, you know, they're, they're gonna walk out through with fifty-five credits from Eastern Washington University, that they can take that transcript and transfer it anywhere, all of those courses are transferable, even to out-of-state colleges, and will be seen uh, like that, so, and if a kiddo's on the mathematical reasoning area, then, then they're still gonna walk out with Eastern credits worth, what, thirty-five credits, so not a bad, not a bankroll, looks pretty good, so, uh, Centralia College, so we started partnering with Centralia College, um, engineering, as Paul, Paul was just in here, um, his courses uh, can be taken as early as freshman year, um, you'll notice the intro to engineering, the urban search and rescue, um, students can take either or, if they take both from us, they're only gonna get ERA 119 credit once, they don't get it, take it, take it for, twice for two credits, um, and then also electric, uh, intro to electrical engineering is gonna get a uh, a 180, which is five credits, so in Paul's situation, kids can walk up the door with eight credits from Centralia College in engineering, you're ready to go, couple that with the fifty-five, maybe they pull from EWU, right, so now they have two transcripts, take their EWU stuff transferred over to Centralia, and they're getting, they're getting pretty darn close, right, to, to a.
You said, they can start this in freshman year?
Yeah, so intro to engineering, students is, is young as a freshman can take intro to engineering, or take urban search and rescue, or take intro to electrical engineering, and they would get transcribed credits.
But on the last slide, which one I, I missed?
Last slide, these, these are all elevens, okay, elevens, twelfth grade courses, this is a tenth grade course, this is an eleventh grade course, and this is a twelfth grade course.
Okay, good.
Yep. Um, and then sports medicine, so, and I, I also want to point out that these courses here are uh, not Um, and then sports medicine. So, and I, I, I also wanna point out that these courses here are, uh, not college and the high school. But they're actually articulation courses. So it's based on the framework that we use, the, the curriculum. So e- even if, uh, our teacher leaves, we hire another STEM teacher. The credit will still continue. Whereas with EWU, the teacher leaves. If we don't hire, hire a teacher with the right qualifications, we no longer get to offer the college credit.
Is that a semester for the credits or?
Um, so, yeah, those are, these ones are all semester. Right here. Uh, sports med is a full year. To, to get the, and it ends up being medical terminology is the one-thirty-nine, which every beginning medical course needs anyway. Um, and the second semester of this is when you get the five credits, but you have to, you have to do first semester, uh, a- as well. Um, currently working on trying to get ninth grade health articulated. I- is our next, so that every, since every freshman takes health. Those that passed would automatically get, and we're looking to see if we can get the three or five credit health, health class taken care of. So how cool would it be if every freshman, every freshman had college credit by the time they were done with their freshman year? Alright. Um. Also new this year from Centralia, this is a college and a high school, Spanish one and two. Um, each, each five credits, again, they would take it full year. They actually get the credit in the second semester. But they have to have successful completion of the full year in order to get it. Um, and that, again, you can take Spanish, I should change Spanish two to ten through twelve, uh, but you can take Spanish one as early as ninth grader. Okay, um, ASL. Um, we, we did have, but now I'm reworking on ASL. Um, and we're gonna work on trying to get an articulation, cause that is a CTE for us. So we're gonna work on trying to get an articulation, uh, done with Centralia's, uh, Kevin Wilson and I have been in conversation. Actually with Centralia College this week about, um, submitting these three courses, health, ASL one, ASL two. And then we also have one other kinda hanging out there, articulation. This is with Wall Wall Community. Um, so students that, uh, take animal biology, uh, would, would get, and that's a four-year class, would get a five-credit. Uh, articulation. So in any of these cases, these transcripts, say a student decided, they take all these courses, student decided to go to Western. They just tell Eastern, send it to Western, they tell Centralia, send the transcript to Western. It's all gonna be transcribed at, at, uh, at, uh, Western where they're going, or POU, wherever they decide to go, right? And so this is what we, what we end up, we, we have, uh, based on course load. Right now as it sits, um, student, a student could walk out the door with sixty-eight credits. Um, and I didn't count like ASL and, and Spanish, cause you wouldn't take both, you'd take one or the other. Um, if you were doing that, and so same with some of the math, so, um. A- at that point, they're almost, they're about a quarter. A twenty-credit quarter away from doing, finishing an AA at this point.
How did Walla Walla get in the mix?
Uh, articulation agreement. It's, it's who, and they, they're one of the few, so it's either. Anything in, in, uh, agricultural classes, really you're gonna articulate with Yakima Valley, or you're gonna articulate with Walla Walla. Walla Walla has, is the one that has just really kinda stepped up and, um, they, they figure if they can get. Some articulation agreements, then, you know, they, they may end up with a student or two.
Yeah.
Right, out of the deal. So, yeah, it's, I know it's an odd, it's an odd one, but, um. There's not a lot of community colleges that offer animal science, so to get that credit, so that's, that's awesome.
Do we pay, that our school district pays that college?
So the, the interesting thing is articulations don't cost anything. So CTE articulations are free. Um, and eastern and central college, college and the high school, yes, there is, there is a cost, so we've been able to, to get a grant. Um, each year in order to cover that, so there has been no cost to the students, and we also make sure that we have the textbooks on hand. Uh, for our students here, so we are, we are supposed to use the college, the text that the college uses, so. Yep.
This is something that we really feel like is important. We have a good, a good number of students who can make it down to do running start. And wanna do running start courses, but we also have a lot of kids who wanna stay in our high school. And so here we have the opportunity to have kids earn credit while they're taking our high school courses. Um, and some of our kids need some more support that the high school teachers can give them, and the parents can stay connected. And under, you know, be communicated with, because. Uh, we can talk to our parents when our kids are our high school kids, even if they're taking these courses and tell them how they're doing, if they're struggling, if they need some more support. Once the kids leave and go to running start, we do have some kids struggle because they, the colleges will not communicate with. The parents, which is an agreement that's made.
This is great. Uh, uh, I think just stretching out the quarter, the coursework a bit more, it's not a ten-week quarter. Semester, maybe even full year, uh, especially for high school, young kids, still, still trying to learn that discipline.
Yes.
What the college is gonna be like, and also the connectivity with the high school. Being able to still be a high school kid.
Yes. Yep.
Yep. And I'll put our structures up against any, any professor. Yeah, so that we have teaching these courses. Yep, it is great. So, that's my, that's my part of it.
Thanks, Justin.
Yep.
I'm like cheerleader now? Um, so at the end of June, the year was eighty-three point three-three percent of the year complete. And our revenues were right on track and our expenditures were a little bit over, um, which is why we did a budget last week. Um, the revenues will catch up. It's, the federal's always behind, but the revenues are gonna increase as well. Um, and then our estimated monthly condition again, uh, for the month of June. Uh, without the million-dollar loan, we ended at two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. So that bottom picture, you see a lot of zeros, um, cause there is not a lot of free money to spend.
Or any.
Thank you for clarifying. Yep. Oh, were there any questions on those two reports? So, a quick update on our audit. So the, oh, uh, SAO, the State Auditor's Office. Um, performs two types of audits, uh, federal and financial statement preparation audit. They do that annually. And then they do an accountability audit every three years. And the accountability audit is looking at that we comply with state laws, uh, RCWs, WACS, our own policies and procedures. And then the federal financial audit, um, looks at all our federal programs as well as the preparation of the financial statements. I'll talk first about the federal financial one, and the entire reports are attached in Word docs if you're interested in perusing them. Um, they're pretty boring reads, so I'll recap it. Um, for federal and financial, they issue an opinion on, uh, the state, like. Financial statements are accurate, correct, and that there's proper internal controls and preparation of those statements. And then they also look at, uh, federal dollars, and they test about twenty-five percent of all our federal dollars. Um, and they're again looking that we comply with the federal requirements as well as have adequate internal controls. Um, to ensure compliance with those. Uh, this year we, and then there's three levels of reporting. So if there's minor issues, they find in a review, they issue an exit item. Um, middle level is a management letter, you still materially complied, um, but they want to. Emphasize its importance, uh, in changing some practices, and then a finding. And the findings are when they say you did not comply with, uh, certain requirements that the feds make. So the financial statements, um, received unqualified opinions, which is the good opinion on reporting and internal controls. And we did receive a finding, um, in the federal programs, which it's the emergency connectivity fund. And every school in the state of Washington that received that money got a finding except for one. Um, there were some pretty stringent lenses looking at these laws, and we're not willing to bend. Um, it has not been written, but the, who's the federal agent?
Uh, Universal Service, uh, Administration, USAC.
They are seeing all these findings coming out of Washington State. And so far haven't asked to recover any money. Um, you have to demonstrate, it was, we got money and bought Chromebooks, so there was enough Chromebooks for students that they needed.
With our S R funds.
With, with the connectivity.
Yes.
Yeah, with the emergency connectivity funds.
It was the hotspots, right?
Nope, these were actual Chromebooks that we bought.
Okay, I thought I was reading something about the hotspots and the connectivity was part of the S R's funding that they had a problem with, what I was reading.
This was different.
Well, they might, they had a very blanket finding that they sent to everybody. So there may be a reference to hotspots, but we didn't buy any hotspots. Uh, some other school districts in the state of Washington did buy hotspots. Um, so what they feel we did not comply with is you have to demonstrate need. So we did a survey for our families, demonstrated that we needed thirteen hundred Chromebooks. We bought less than that, it, what was the amount of thousands? We bought a thousand, but they don't like that we didn't issue those thousand to kids that said yes on a survey. Um, so they say we didn't demonstrate need, cause we should have. Sally says she. Sally says she needs a Chromebook. They want to see that we gave that to Sally, not Jane. Um, so that is really what it's over. Um. So it's, I mean, findings are a bad thing. We did not concur with it. But we feel we complied in all aspects of this in FCC, uh, USAC hasn't. They could ask for money back, but they sent a letter saying, um. We received your audit finding. Thanks for your effort. We'll let you know if we need anything.
Eighty percent of, eighty percent of the, uh, audit findings of two billion dollars. Total across the United States, came out of state of Washington. Eighty percent of all audit findings.
The auditor that's doing.
Strange.
Yes.
Hmm, they were not.
Yes, and the statistics have been shown, and they're, they're not, they, yep. Their interpretation has been very different than the other state in the United States that have done audits on the same money. Uh, in other states.
Huh, interesting, yeah. The Chromebook is made available to every student.
Yes.
And thirteen hundred families said they.
Yes, I needed or not, every student.
Yeah. We tried. We're not the only district. There, there's, there's over a hundred districts. So. We're okay.
Nice job.
So we're okay, no big deals, nothing, no major red flags with any of the audit stuff that came through?
Nope, um, I, I haven't, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the accountability audit, but that was just it for the financial and. Single.
Federal stuff.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then so the, that they look at three years' history on our accountability audit, and again, they have the exit item management letter and findings. We did not receive any findings. They did issue a management letter that's not included in the public report. Uh, in the published report, so the public didn't see it, but they, um, felt that we had good, good processes in our ASB. But could definitely improve on them, um, strengthen some internal controls. They provided specific examples so we could. Uh, just work on cleaning that up. And the high school is, has reviewed it and is working on implementing those. Um, again, it's just a management letter, cause they didn't say you broke the law, but they think we can improve. Um, to ensure we stay, uh, compliant with the law. In the second area that they, uh, did in a management letter was the roofing project at G M S that ended in COVID. So there were like three documents that we didn't have on file. We had gone through KCDA and they couldn't find them, so they just recommended that we ensure. Our files are accurate and complete. And then an exit recommendation they made, um. They made two. One of them is supplemental contracts that we issued to teachers for various things, being the band director, being the. Doing the plays. Um, they thought we didn't have them signed in a timely manner, um, so just recommended that we get those signed in a timely manner. And the other one was related to our financial condition, and. There, I'll, I'll read you their recommendation. In our financial condition analysis, the district had one warning indicator for fund balance deficiency. Stating they have nineteen days of operating expenditures. We recommend the district continue to monitor their budget and take steps to improve their financial condition. And again, they, um, felt comfortable making that an exit, exit recommendation, cause they were able to see the steps we are making. Um, our budget committees and that we did have a plan and were aware of our financial situation. Um, that's usually a bigger deal to them. If they were like, hey, you have no money, and you're like, what? I need to do a budget reduction, um, but we were, were able to explain it to them in forthcoming in our plan, so, um, they kept that in the next. Thank you, John. Now.
There you go. Don't bring a hip on us, you know.
All right, so next, uh, just a few things. First of all, first day, that was yesterday. It went great, as did, um, today. Uh, yeah, we have a little, oh, we have Parker, Andrea's daughter is up there in the top right-hand corner getting her breakfast. On her first day of school. A lot of pictures from the primary, um, I was out in all the buildings. I didn't snap the same number of pictures in the other buildings. Um, but they all had some really. Uh, I would say it was a great start. Our high school kids were in classes within. Man, ten minutes. And there were no students in the counseling room or counseling office waiting for schedules. Everybody had their schedules, everybody was ready to go. Uh, middle school was the same thing, Grand Mound was smooth. So just a very good, smooth startup. Kids were happy, staff seems to be happy, and, um, things are going well. Yeah, to get ready for school, we did have a lot of different events. Roof School Supplies, uh, was one of our events. And we had, especially since we weren't providing as many school supplies. So Roof had over two hundred students that came and got school supplies there. They did a great job taking care of our community and our students. Um. They, a- as they were here, we also helped families log into queue or attempted to help families log into queue on that day. Uh, so that was a, a good event to connect with them, and then there were some other resources for them there. I will also say with the school supplies, the schools did a really nice job. We've really narrowed down the list of what we asked. Families to purchase. It ended up being about twenty-five dollars per student. So, um, at each of the schools, regardless of the grade level, um, if, if a family wanted to stay within that limit and. You know, buy just what was on the list, they could definitely do it for about twenty-five dollars, and that was our goal. And then there was lots of resources in the area where they could pick up some things, and there's still supplies in the buildings. We had kindergarten roundup, and that was just another great day. All of our kindergartners came in. Spent the day getting to know some of our teachers, answering some questions and things. So that we could place them accurately in different classrooms, and I thought it was really fun to see the fast. Our parents team down there in the bottom right-hand corner, they had a signing table. And the kids went and they were able to participate in a signing table as part of kindergarten. They were signing up for kindergarten, so just like our. Are some of our athletes do signing tables later in life. Those were two events. We also had our staff return and spent a lot of time learning. Our focus for them was on essential standards and common assessments. That's similar to what we were working on last year in literacy instruction. Joey continued the letters training with our staff, and our staff are really appreciating that training. That went hand in hand with the new curriculum adoption at the K-five that we're doing, and both the reading and the, um. Uh, ELA, and then we also worked on social emotional learning and just talking about how we're gonna be implementing that. Uh, with our kids, make sure that they're feeling good about coming to school, they're getting care of, not just their academic needs. Um, and then behavior systems and supports. That's another piece. That really, we know we need to have strong systems and structures in place for some of the behaviors that we have in our schools these days. So, teachers are working together with administrators to put together a plan for their buildings, and they spent some time doing that. I did wanna go over just a little bit of data. So this was our kindergarten readiness. You can see all the way through, um, from back twenty fifteen, sixteen, all the way through twenty-three, twenty-four. Where for some reason our kindergartners who came to school last year were. Only thirty-one percent of them demonstrated kindergarten readiness in all six components where we, we scored them. It was as low as it was before COVID, so twenty nineteen, twenty was right before COVID, and then you see, there isn't. Uh, we have, skip a couple of, or a year of, uh, measurements there, but, uh. Interesting data to see where we're at, and when you look at that twenty nineteen, twenty, it'll be interesting to make that correlation to a third grade score. That you're gonna see in just a few minutes here. Our next slide. This one is our SBA scores. And this is an early release, so we'll be talking about more of our scores later. But the blue column is the, so the column on the right is our school district and. But the blue column is the, so the column on the right is our school district and the gold, the column on the left. Uh, did I say that right? No.
No.
Column on the left is the blue one, which is our district. Column on the right is our is our state. So you can see how we're comparing to the state, and we are definitely closing the gap on our state. There are definitely areas where the state is still outperforming us, like in third, fourth and fifth grade, but that gap is closing. And then in sixth or seventh and eighth grade, not sixth grade, but seventh and eighth, you definitely see that we are outperforming the state, and then tenth grade we were equal there, and that's on the E L A assessment. Just one assessment that we use to demonstrate um the academic achievement of our kids. On the next one, you see the math. And here again, the blue is our school district, the gold is the state. And in fourth grade, you see we're outperforming, and then again, on seventh and eighth grade, you see we're performing the state. But the other um areas were close. Now, I would say, you know, we want to do better than the state, right? When we look at sixth grade and thirty-eight percent of our kids are demonstrating competency on our standards in sixth grade and thirty-eight percent of the state, I think we want to do better. We want to get all of our kids or a much higher percentage of our students demonstrating competency. So we want to surpass the state and do even better. But we're closing those gaps.
What happened with the period is alarming.
It's great, alarming there, yes, good, good catch. Stands out, doesn't it?
Does stand out.
Yep, we are having conversations about why and what happened there. Um, the kids did demonstrate better competency on other assessments that we've given, so this one is someplace where there it's it's low. Um, uh, we're doing some work. I don't have a lot of answers for you there. We think that the kids did not come in and demonstrate everything they know. But only twelve percent of our kids came in and did show that they could meet standard. And we do know our kids are struggling in math, but when you look back, we've done, gone back, we don't do any any state assessment in ninth grade, but we did do it in eighth grade. And those kids were performing very, you know, close to what the state was doing in eighth grade. So it's not like there was a huge gap unless what we did in ninth grade and tenth grade just totally was off base, but I don't think that it is. We're teaching to the standards. We've got teachers that are really working hard there. There is a piece of, you know, kids needing to buy into the assessment when you get to tenth grade. If they decide they're not taking the test, don't want to take it seriously, but that's a lot of kids saying they're not going to take it seriously, so. We're working on that. We're trying to determine what happened.
So that, this is this year's juniors?
Yes. Yep. This um demonstrates growth. So this uses two points in time using the S B A. Uh, so it takes data of students who took the test in twenty-four, so last spring, and compares them to students who scored similarly similarly to them um when they all, when they took the test in twenty-three. And it shows which students had more growth than other students in the state. And you can see in fourth and fifth grade, we definitely have some trends of our kids in fourth and fifth grade showing some real growth in their learning compared to other students who were in the same place, you know, the previous year. So this could be kids who are in level one, aren't passing the assessment, but we're seeing them really grow, and they're growing at a faster rate than some of the kids in the other parts of the state. It could also be in kids who are in level four, and they're still demonstrating a lot of growth. So it's all over the place, and we're breaking it down to see where our kids are growing. But we definitely see in fourth and fifth grade, a high percentage of students that are growing. Um, the other grades, we're seeing some good growth, but not the same trends as we saw there in fourth and fifth grades. Eighth grade's looking good, though. It's like continuing to move forward. That's in E L A, and then you see the math scores. And here you see eight, our sixth and eighth grade, both having trends that show over the past three years, the kids have been having significant growth over time in those grades. And next one. Um, this one breaks it down in our student groups, so you see our multilingual learners in that first group of three, then our students with I P's in the second group, and our low-income students in that third group. And again, demonstrating some growth. We're looking at that multilingual student population, and we really have been working on uh literacy skills and doing different work with our kids. Uh, we're teachers doing different instructional strategies with our kids to help them learn how to um read and comprehend. And so we're wondering if maybe that's making a difference. We don't have, you know, tons of evidence, but we do know that was a focus area. Also, to see that with our low-income students is another group of students that struggle. But that is sixty percent of our population right there. So seeing that the work we're doing is helping them improve, and then our students with I P's love to see more of an increase there, but at least we're not going backwards. And this was math. You can see there's growth in all three of those there. Okay, uh, the next one is attendance. We've looked at attendance. You looked at it a few weeks ago. This is a focus area for us, and so it's up here again. I just want you to know we continue to focus. This says that sixty-five point seven percent of our students last year attended school, ninety percent or more. So we have uh thirty-five percent of our kids almost that did not attend school regularly last year. So this is something we're really working on. Um, all the schools are focusing on it. Our teachers know that we need to get our kids there. Don't have our kids there, and we can't make sure that they're where they need to be to learn. So we're, this is a focus, and it needs to be a focus in our community. I talked to Chamber today, and I shared, shared this data with them. I think everybody needs to know that this is a focus. Um, next, I wanted to just let you know, um, we just received notification that we received the Gear Up Grant. Um, that's put together by the Washington State Achievement Council. It's a thirty-five million dollar grant that covers, well, this thirty-five million dollar grant will cover thirteen schools in the state. Um, and it'll provide resources for us to work with students for seven years. So it is a consistent program. It's not just a one-time, one-year-and-done type of thing. Um, but we will be able to, we will have staff and support that will be able to be hired by our district. Um, probably one staff member. And the focus is to work with students in grade seven through thirteen to provide tutoring and mentoring and um just prepare them for career in college and actually and make sure that they're ready to go um and do a deeper dive into into the work of preparing kids for the for their future. So excited to have this. We have a a meeting where we'll learn more about this in a few weeks. But it's a great opportunity, especially since we did lot lose some of our counselors in our reductions, to be able to have this, um, a person that's going to be working in this capacity, I think will really be great for our kids. Just a little bit more information about the um grant. So Gear Up's goals, um, as it says there, number one, increase academic performance and preparation for post-secondary education and training. And then number two, increase high school graduation and post-secondary participation. And then number three, increase students and family knowledge of post-secondary options and preparation preparations and finances. Those are the goals of the work that we will do with this person once we get them hired to work with our kids in the district.
So it aligns with the thirteen, so it goes all the way through their first year of college.
Yes, which is also exciting. I think that's
Hmm.
It, so it starts with seventh graders and goes all the way through their first year, not necessarily college, first year beyond high school. Yeah.
Yeah.
And for some kids, it'll be hot college, but it does really work to training, trades, yeah. So I'm excited to be able to have that data and be able to have that continued support with kids. There's one more slide about this one. Um, and it's their vision, which I thought was very appropriate, it aligns a lot with the conversations we've been having, but all students are prepared for an education or training pathway that will lead to a career that has labor market value and aligns with their instructional goals and passions. That's a big part about the work that they do is they really are looking to make sure kids have information about careers that our labor market indicates. Or, you know, they're, what, what does our labor market need? Instead of just letting kids say, I want to be a firefighter, offense, and you know, they really are.
Not the smartest.
But they do really go out and look at the data and then help the kids learn more about the options where they believe the labor market is in need.
Is that, is that for all of our students?
Seventh.
Just specific students?
Seventh grade and on.
How do they reach all of them?
Well, they, their focus is low-income students, so that's sixty-seven percent, sixty.
See when the data comes out.
We will see, but last year it was sixty-five, sixty-four percent of our population. Um, so that's their focus, but it doesn't mean that if a student comes in who is from a family that isn't considered low-income, they won't work with them. They just really focus.
Students have to reach out to them. They don't reach out to the students.
Nope, they will be putting systems and structures in eyes to work on kids.
Yeah, also the Ministry of the Washington College Grant, which
Yes.
Pays for college for, it's a tremendous opportunity.
All they have to do is fill out the.
And there is money, money just sitting every year unused.
Yep. So this is part of the, my hope is that this will be part of the training to really get our kids aware of the money that's out there. Next. Um, coming to an end here with my slides, but there, we do have an Athletic Hall of Fame um night. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of it. It's Saturday night, five-thirty. You can get tickets at the high school, or there's a phone number to call, but I don't see the phone number there. If you need the phone number, let me know. There is a list of people that are on that picture there that are being um recognized. Can you see them? To go down them?
Yeah.
Gene Goldrick, the ninety-three baseball team, Buck DeBrueller, Maya Lee Swatson, Kenny Driver, Wanda Blanksmull, Brian Vicki.
So they will be inducted into the Hall of Fame. And everybody is welcome to come to the evening. I think they're twenty-five dollar tickets. And then we've got some events. Uh, if you are interested, I just learned that tomorrow night is Howdy Family Night at RMS. It's right out there in the parking lot. It's very easy to stop by, say hello, and then get in your car and head on out on another event if you choose to, so. Uh, but it's a great event to stop by and see some of the middle school staff and students. Uh, football game, first home football game is Friday, starts at seven. We have the Athletic Hall of Fame on Saturday. There's home volleyball game on the tenth, so next week, six-thirty start. Uh, we have a board work session next Wednesday, comes quick this time. And then on the thirteenth, we have a back-to-school bash at Grand Mountain. That is a really big event. Um, if you're interested in just coming and seeing the community out at, out, um, that would be a great event to attend. It's from five to seven o'clock over at Grand Mound. Most of it's outside. Uh, but there's food.
Hot dogs again.
And hamburgers.
Hot dog and hamburgers this year. All right. And it's not going to rain.
That's right. North looking ninety degrees. Um, but there's lots of community resources and school resources for kids and families. Great event to come, and last year there was a ton of people at that event.
There's a comedian too this time.
Oh.
At the end of the, after they go through all the resources and have their dinner, there, we end with a comedian.
Good, that, last year it was a reptile.
reptile man, yes. Sure, it's the comedian, and that part is sponsored by that.
Yes. Okay. On the eighteenth, we have a strategic plan core team meeting. And then we have a board meeting on the twenty-fifth, and then the homecoming football game is on the twenty-seventh. And then I just wanted to make sure you have the board work day on your calendars for October fifth. We will talk about that more next Wednesday. That's all I've got. Any questions?
If that's a Saturday, right?
Yes.
There's a Google.
For.
You know.
PDF. There's one for that.
Oh, shoot. I was going based on the Google slides.
Oh, yes.
But my turn.
Oh. Oh, sorry. Okay, um, we can vote on that, right?
Yep. Let me explain what it is real quick.
Yes, please. Again, I mean, I know what, okay, so in in short term, uh, we messed up a date on there, uh, which is the the eighteenth, and it's actually supposed to be the twenty-fifth.
There was an error on the original.
Yeah, there's an error.
On the calendars, on the board meeting schedule for the year. It said we were meeting on September eighteenth. That was incorrect. It's September twenty-fifth. This was the board meeting schedule you approved in May, so we just need to have you make a, make a correction.
Move to approve.
One second.
Any discussion? No discussions? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, the motion is passed. You could have just stood there.
I could have, but you know, maybe there was going to be like a hot debate about this, which he meant that. So you just like, keep going. Okay, so, um, uh, one of the things that uh we are, we are required to do, and we have the opportunity to do uh approve our multilingual program plan every year as stated in our board policy, two, one, one, zero. And so just to get at you, this is just a little bit of an overview of our multilingual program that we are offering this year as we do every year. The actual program plan is attached in your, in your uh board docs, very much like Jill, it's, it's interesting reading, so you're, you're welcome to to read, but I'm going to give you a brief overview of what it says. Um, just uh to to give some background knowledge, uh, educating multilingual learners is a basic education requirement under the Civil Rights Law. So it's the obligation of 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 school districts and basic education to do the following things, right? The first is to have appropriate identification, screening and notification reporting practices for uh students in the multilingual program. Uh, for uh students in multilingual program to have meaningful access to content instruction uh as provided and trained by and supported uh by and by a trained and supportive teachers. And then the third thing that our students in the multilingual program have a right to, which is designated in speech language development by trained teachers, uh, teachers that have, our staff that have been trained in how to appropriately uh, you know, help progress a student's language ability. So those are the three kind of tenants of, they call that the Castlevania standard of a multilingual program. So there's two types, and this is where it can get a little bit confusing. So, uh, so there is the state definition of what a multilingual student in program would be. That is a very narrow definition. That's all based on what's called the, the Home Language Survey. So students uh that come to our district fill out a home language survey indicating what other languages may be spoken at the home, right? And so based on that, you know, students can qualify for in in program, the state program, which is called the Transitional Bilingual Instructional Program. So state funds, it is a supplement to the basic education, so there's additional money at the state level that has been used to supplement, you know, that that basic every responsibility. Currently, Rochester, we staff two point eight certified staff members through our TBIT funds. So that's where our TBIT funds go is specifically to those teachers' salaries. Then there's the federal bucket of money, which is tiny compared to the state bucket of money. Um, and they have a broader definition of what multilingual students are. And so every once in a while, when we start talking about multilingual kids in program, we start talking about potentially Title III Native American students. And where, what, how are they multilingual? So Title III Native American students is because the federal definition of multilingual says that a student that is affiliated with a tribe that screams at risk in literacy can potentially be counted as a multilingual student under the federal definition of it. And that's where they have a broader definition of what a multilingual learner is. The state has that narrow one. The states, they know they have to indicate something on their home language survey, a language other than English. So that's where it can get confusing about what the state considers a multilingual student in program versus what the federal government considers a multilingual uh uh student in program. That federal Title III dollars are supplemental to the state dollars. So really what that federal government has says, we're not going to fund this, these programs, but we will provide a supplement to the state's obligation to fund these programs. And uh, as I can say, it is tiny. Um, so we, in our, uh, with our federal money, uh, we staff point two of a multilingual coach that provides professional development and some monitoring of our Title III kids and just additional professional development. So there's some legal stuff, when Jill talked all about the audit, about what we can and cannot use that federal money for um in regards to supplanting our state. Any questions? Currently, we have two hundred and forty-one students enrolled in our transitional bilingual program, our state program. Uh, we have fourteen more potential that are in the process of being screened. These are new to, new to our kindergarten kids that may come in that we haven't screened or. These are new to, new to our kindergarten kids that may come in that we haven't screened, or students that are coming from us from out of state or out of country. This year, we have ten days, uh, when they enroll to screen them, so we will potentially have a little bit over, what, two fifty five, will be my guess. Uh, we have forty two students that have exited the program in the last four years. So when we think about students that are entered into our multilingual program, we assess them every year on their language ability, right? Their ability to read, write, listen and speak at a high level or proficient level in English. And so in the last four years, we have exited forty two of those students have steamed and proficient. To make it even more confusing, we have approximately a hundred and fifty students in our schools that were in the multilingual program but are no longer in the multilingual program because they have shown proficiency, but we no longer monitor them, we monitor students for four years to make sure that they're doing okay. Um, and then once they're doing that, they're like, they're, they're good to go, so we do have about two hundred kids in our system that are multilingual learners. They're just no longer in the program because they have been shown proficiency in the English language. Yeah, at a high rigor sort of level. And then when I talked about our Title III Native American, we do have about forty three students in that Title III Native American, uh, pool that don't, uh, touch the state program of T bit. So the goal of our multilingual program is always to effectively assess, teach and equally support our multilingual students in program uh, to exit the multilingual program, our goal is always to get them to a level where they can be proficient in reading, writing, listening and speaking at an academic level, so they can be successful in their classes, it's the whole purpose of the program. And we do this in a, a number of ways and different models that we, we serve our kids. Uh, at, uh, the T five level, we do that through small groups, so, uh, you know, that's called supportive mainstream, so based on their language proficiency and how well they're doing in reading, writing, listening and speaking, they may get pulled out into smaller groups, or they may get pushed in, so whether it be, uh, one of our multilingual teachers or, uh, designing lessons or providing supports within the classroom. It really is focusing on the data and seeing, okay, what do kids need at specific levels or progression of their language development. The other thing that we do at a T five level is our dual language program, so, uh, all except for one student in kindergarten through first grade uh, that is in our multilingual program also participates in the dual language program. And so they, uh, when we think about dual language and you have twenty, you have half, half of the class of native Spanish speakers, half the class of native English speakers. Those native Spanish speakers, all, all except for a couple are actually in program, um, in, in the, in the the T bit, the state program, and so they not only do get some, some push in and pull out services, the fact that they're in a dual language program in and of itself is considered part of their, their multilingual services. In sixth through eighth grade, uh, the, the, the data is, or the services look very similar to what they do in K five, obviously, it's just in through periods, not just a classroom teacher, so that, uh, our, our multilingual teachers that serve six through eight, they are through small groups pushing into classes, are pushing into supports, whether it be through an educational system or language, or activities designed for the classroom teacher to implement. Or, you know, based on data, potentially pulling out in like a first period advisory class. Or if, uh, some of like course support and ready, well, that's high school. But, uh, first period advisory class, uh, is when some of our multilingual teachers do pull up some kids as well. In ninth through twelfth grade, uh, we do do some pullouts, it is with a really small section of our students uh, that tend to have a lower language development, uh, for a variety of reasons. Uh, the most common one is that they have not been with us throughout their entire school career. We do have kids that come to us from different states, from different countries, middle school and high school, and so to try to put a student in every single high school class that maybe just got into the country a couple of weeks ago, um, is that, it's not the best practice, and so we do try to provide a couple of sheltered classes for them, like their English class, so. Uh, students in program, uh, have the ability to go into what's called a sheltered ELA class, which is they will receive an English credit for that, but it's sheltered and taught by our multilingual teacher, so a lot of different supports and things are, are added to that, they also have an ability to do an elective course as well. Um, to again, gain credits while they're still learning, uh, and progressing in their English development. Uh, we progress monitor all of our kids, uh, K twelve this year, this is new this year, using some at K twelve, so we watch their language progression, uh, throughout the year, hopefully seeing that growth as the goal that we want our kids to exit. Um, hopefully within three to five years. You are more than welcome to visit any of our multilingual programs in action at any time and, and, uh, one of the things that we need to do, uh, from the board policy is just approve that multilingual program that you have. We need a motion.
Okay.
Unless you have questions.
So, do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Second? I'll second it. Yep. Any discussion?
I have discussions at the time, um, I saw here it covers four years. Is, doesn't matter, high school. Grand Mountain Elementary is four years and then you stop watching what these kids are doing, or we don't get, receive any more funding for that?
So we, uh, so a student will be in program as long as they need it, right? And so, but once they have demonstrated proficiency, we monitor for four years, that's, uh, something that through the federal, uh, early, uh, uh, elementary and secondary education act have said to monitor for four years. We actually only get funding for two years from the state, but, uh, so our fun, our monitoring uh, tends to be more, uh, intense, the first and the second year, and then we slowly just kind of watch our monitoring. And we do have other programs, obviously LAP and some of our other programs that kind of catch those kids if they're struggling, but usually after four years, we're pretty confident that they're, they're, they're.
Yeah, they're getting good attendance.
Tens, just like every, every other student group, right, some, some struggle more than, more than others, I can't say that our our multilingual students are probably an outlier in attendance, but just like we're seeing a dip with all of our kids, you know, our multilingual students see the dip as well, so.
And maybe kids have to exit before that four year start.
Absolutely, yeah.
So they have to be proficient before that four year monitoring starts.
Yes. A typical, there are always ki- kids that exit earlier, there are always kids that exit later, we had a kid that was in eleventh grade last year that exited the program. And so he'll monitor him for one year because he'll be a senior, uh, and then, and then he'll, he'll, he'll go, hopefully he'll go. Um, but typically, late elementary, early middle school is where we see the bulk of our kids exit. That's just a typical, as we know, that a language takes five to seven years to develop, well, that's around five to seven years of schooling and, and providing support. So with that, knowing that, uh, that we monitor for about four years, we, we would tend to monitor a typical student probably up until the first, first year of high school.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A discussion of.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Crickets, okay, the motion is passed. Okay, um, first reading of the policies, which we've, we've discussed these. We had to set, was this first reading, I thought it was.
These are first reading in the, yep, and you, this is just for information, but there are two policies, twenty four ten, which is the high school graduation requirements. The real thing that's outlined here is the communication that we need to have with families about the dual language in the college and the high school courses. And the fact that students can now take college and high school in summer for running start. So, um, not college and high school, but they can do running start in the summer.
Oh, yeah, I could have given it, say that again.
Yeah. Um, and then there's some alignment with language. So that's twenty four ten, and then the second policy is thirty two forty six. And that really was, that's, that's a policy about restraint and isolation and other uses of reasonable force with students. And this really was just, um, a legal update to, uh, align with the RCWs correctly.
OPSI stuff.
Yep, OSPI things, yeah.
OS.
Yeah. So, and this is just for information, it is first reading.
First, okay. Any question? No? Alright. This one is required to vote. Out of endorsement, a summit resolution.
These are teachers who, um, we have teaching in courses that their endorsement is not officially say they can teach, we believe, and they will provide, be provided support to be able to uh, teach in these areas if needed.
Like a much shorter list than years past.
Yep.
Well, that's when you told me, oh, I was like.
Yeah. Yep. This one we need approval on.
Okay. Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Uh, second?
What's second?
Any discussion? No further discussion, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No opposed, the motion has passed. Okay, we have some donations here. The first security bank donated twenty five, uh, twenty five hundred dollars to the Rise Center. Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve? Oh, oh, no, I was on, make that motion.
You make the motion, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion?
Very nice.
All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? The motion has passed.
Thank you.
Oh.
We, we will get cards for each of these, we don't have them tonight, but we'll get them for next week.
Okay. First, uh, sorry, okay, yeah. Okay, the next one. Chehalis Tribe has donated, uh, fourteen thousand dollars for a swing for the, uh, middle school or a special education program. Okay, very nice. Very nice, yeah, okay. Um, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
A second?
One second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, hey, uh, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? No opposed, uh, motion is passed. Okay, uh. The music, Music Aid Northwest, where'd you say that was?
That this is an organization.
It's an organization, okay.
Very cool.
Um, donated twenty five hundred for fifteen xylophone stands for the elementary school. Okay, uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second it. Okay, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion has passed. And the next one here.
How do you pronounce that?
Can I say it?
Give her, give her pinch up.
Pento?
Pinch up.
Punch, okay. Uh.
Well, there's the foursomes.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Uh, they, um.
Oh, what? Where did it say how much it is on?
Give the main value. Okay. Okay, uh, yes. So could I get a, uh, motion to approve?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Do you wanna expand on?
This, Andrea might be able to tell you a little bit more if you wanted, but this is a, a big log that we have a slice of now, and it's on a nice display over at RPS. Um, and the kids have already been excited about seeing it, being able to count, you know, the lines in the logs. How have we connected?
So, these were also donated to all the Lewis County school districts, but they wanted to include Rochester because um, one of our teachers, uh, Shelley Simmons knows this family very well and grew up with them and he wanted, Bob came out, met me in the summer and delivered it, and he was more than happy to give it to us, so.
Oh, yeah.
Nice.
Is this on permanent display?
Yep, it's in the library. And it's on wheels, so we can roll it to other schools and share it with other kids, yeah.
Somebody must have been thinking there.
Bob.
Hey. Okay, is, I, any, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? No opposed, the motion has passed. Okay, um. Surplus items.
This is a long list, it does have the two buses on there that I had emailed about, if you want any information, Ed is here, he knows those buses well. But we do recommend that they're both surplus.
Have we gotten our new bus yet?
No, that has not been purchased, and we actually have another plan now, so.
I thought we were waiting to take possession.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion has passed. And the next. Can you explain this better?
You bet.
Yeah, I'm like, I'll try to explain that.
This is a science pilot at the middle school, Justin, you wanna say a little bit about this?
Uh, so, yep, this is, uh, this is for science materials at, at the middle school. Um, this is actually enough materials to cover this year and next year, which would mean that we would, in the third year, have a savings annually of five thousand dollars a year, uh, moving forward. This is what this allows us to do, so this is a, spend some money upfront to save a bunch of money in, in following years.
Okay. Do I have a, a motion to approve? So moved. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Questions?
Question, is any of this grant funded?
No.
Thank you. Final question.
Any further?
It does replace costs that we, so we stopped spending in one area in order to spend here, so it's a, it's a wash.
Good.
Okay.
And this is a curriculum then?
Materials to teach science.
Okay.
Great, no, no, okay, um, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? No opposed, the motion has passed.
This is, uh, just for your information, this is the minimum basic education requirement collection that we have to answer every year, it's numerous pages, I do not recommend we go through it tonight, but it is here if you want to go through it. It basically asks things like, are we meeting the minute requirement that we have for our students? Are we teaching, um, social studies at the proper grades? Um, it goes through, we have, yes, are we doing recess, providing thirty minutes of recess to our kids, so just lots of questions, Andrea can tell you all about them right now.
Short versus we're in compliance?
We are in compliance, that's very, that's a good point, thank you, Grant, good point.
Sounds like, yeah.
It's just information, yeah.
Okay, just general knowledge.
Thank you, Andrew.
Alright, uh, collective bargaining agreement?
So the, um, REA did ratify, we, we, uh, finished August twelfth. The REA membership ratified the agreement on the twenty first, and so this is, um, asking you to approve uh, the language, we talked about it a little bit last week, but approve what we shared, uh, about the bargaining agreement and moving forward with our REA. For the one year agreement. Yes, I know. You, you need to.
Well, you need to, okay, so, um, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
A second, please?
Sorry.
Second, any, any discussion? No, okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? No opposed? The motion has passed. Oh, kidoki. Uh, Paul, comment? Nobody?
No.
Nobody signed up outside? Nobody beating down the doors on us, are they? No? Okay, uh. We're good? Okay, the meeting is adjourned at twenty hundred.